Good morning. The LSU Board of Supervisors meeting for June 19th, 2020 will now come to order. Ms. Griffith, will you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am, Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Dan?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Shadland? Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Perry? Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough? Madam Chair, if we have a quorum.
Thank you. Today, our invocation will be given by Rashela Jackson, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Gideon Adiyamo. Ms. Jackson?
Dearest God, we come before you humbly as we know how. Thank you for allowing us to meet today. Thank you for your continued grace, mercy, and blessings. I want you to cover everyone under the sound of my voice in your anointing and your power. I pray for their health, strength, and life, and thank you for covering them. We pray today's meeting is productive and transformative. We stand before you because truths that should be self-evident are not so evident in our country, and we turn to you to breathe more of your spirit into us because we find we cannot breathe because the arms of armed forces rattle our throats when we call for justice. We shout into the heavens, black lives do matter. We pray today not for calm, but for righteousness to flow like a mighty river until peace has filled the earth, waters filled the sea. Comfort the families who grieve, strengthen us to work in a world where all your people are equal. And thank you for all that you do in your sweet and powerful name. Amen.
Mr. Adiyamo, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's our tradition to ask each student who is with us today to give a brief introduction of themselves and speak on their impact and their studies and time at LSU if you so wish. So I'll open this up, Mr. Adiyamo, since we have you on video. Would you like to begin?
All right, no problem. So my name is Gideon Adiyamo. I am a sophomore at LSU studying kinesiology. I'm the current logistics chair for the Black Male Leadership Initiative. Lately, I've been working with the fellow of my other student leaders, such as Devin Woodson, Cam Cryer, Justin Franklin, Alazia Johnson, Kiyami Brown, Mishela Jackson on the call, and Unique Love, as well as many, many others who I, the list would be too long to name, we're working to ensure that our campus and our community is as comfortable and as progressive as possible. A few weeks ago, the Black Organization Student Leaders of LSU, we launched a blackout LSU campaign, which was initiated by Ms. Kristen White in order to create LSU to be a more safe and inspiring environment for black undergraduate students, graduate students, staff, and faculty. With the United Social Media Campaign and a peaceful demonstration, we grieved and honored the lives of Maude Aubrey, Rihanna Taylor, and George Floyd, and countless many other black Americans who were senselessly killed by the police and targeted vigilantes. Roughly 400 people came out dressed in black, many with signs in hand. This support and all the various support we have received since reinforce something we already knew. We might not have chosen the time, but the time and the LSU community has chosen us. And so with that, I would like to hand it off to my fellow leader on campus, Mishela Jackson.
Greetings. I am Rashela Ja-- oh, sorry. I said greetings. I am Rashela Jackson. Can everyone hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Okay. I am the current president of the Black Law Student Association at the LSU Law Center. So I came into this because we wanted some graduate school representation with the Blackout LSU platform, and so it has been very beneficial because all black students on campus should feel welcome there. And so last week, after meetings with the Board of Supervisors and President Galligan hosted a summit to formally address our six core calls to action, we are pleased to say that the university announced specific short, mid, and long-term actions in response to all of our calls. These calls and actions can be found at lsu.edu/gather. There you can also find the LSU Foundation donation link specifically for the AACC to help fund black student boards and programming. We have one goal, to bring long-lasting change to the university we all love. And no, and what was committed to us at that meeting is just to start a change. That brings us to today, where the board will consider a motion to remove Troy H. Middleton's name and bus from the library. People do not change until institutions change, and symbols of those institutions must change as well. No one can rewrite history or change the past, but we urge the board to approve the motion to promote anti-hated LSU now and years to come. This is only the beginning. It is time for merely pro-diversity from here on LSU. It is anti-hate. It is black lives matter. Thank you.
And so with that, we want to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to be on this call today. We also want to thank the governor for also being, for his support within our movement. And we'd like to acknowledge that today is June 19th, June 19th, which is a significant and monumental day for the black community. Just say happy Juneteenth to everyone out there, and we hope this meeting is as productive and as progressive as we know it can be.
Thank you both for joining us today. Now I'd like to call forward Mr. Stone Cox, president of Louisiana State University A&amp;M Student Government Association and newly elected board member for the Board of Supervisors. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Stone Brian Cox, do solemn swear.
I, Stone Brian Cox, do solemn swear.
And I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of Louisiana.
The Constitution and laws of Louisiana.
The bylaws of the LSU Board of Supervisors.
The bylaws of the LSU Board of Supervisors.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
And I will faithfully and partially discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a member of the Board of Supervisors.
As a member of the Board of Supervisors.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
I'll give Mr. Cox a moment to return to his seat. It is our honor to welcome Governor John Bell Edwards as our special guest, joining us today to address a topic coming before the board. The governor has been a fearless leader for our state. He has been a genuine supporter of this university as one of its proud alumni. And today, Governor, we're very happy to welcome you, and thank you for joining us. And I'd like to offer you the floor to speak to the Board of Supervisors.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair, fellow members of the Board of Supervisors, President Galligan, and everyone who's zooming into this meeting today. As Gideon said, I think it's particularly appropriate that this issue is coming before the Board of Supervisors today on Juneteenth. It is a day that commemorates the end of slavery in the United States, a shameful part of our past as a nation, and it is a day of celebration. And I'm proud to have, again this year, issued a proclamation observing June 19th as Juneteenth in the state of Louisiana. In our state, we celebrate the many different cultures that make our state so beautiful and diverse. Diversity is also a source of our strength. It is one of the many reasons that I am very proud to be a Louisianan. It's also the reason why I made sure to hire an administration that looks like our state and that truly represents the people of our state. You know, I think it goes without saying that over the past several weeks, our nation has been confronted with the reality and the ugliness of racism as well as the impact it's had and is having on our society. As a result, we're having very difficult but long overdue conversations about race. And I, like many people, have been listening to those whose life experiences are different than mine. In 2020, we value diversity. Diversity among our students, staff, and faculty. And we want every student, without exception, to feel welcome, to feel valued, and to feel respected. So we have to engage in hard, uncomfortable conversation. We must be honest. We have to engage in good faith. We have to listen, and as we listen, we actually have to hear. And then after hearing, we have to do. We have to take action as appropriate and necessary. Obviously, the black student leaders at LSU are among the important voices that we need to listen to. You're doing that, and I'm doing that. In fact, LSU students of all races and backgrounds are telling us that it's time for their library to represent someone that everybody, every student, can be proud of. And I support them. It is time for the name of the library to be changed. Simply put, and I think this gets right to the heart of the matter. In 2020 and going forward, LSU students shouldn't be asked to study in a library bearing the name of someone who didn't want them to be LSU students. We can do better. We can be better. And there are no denying the contributions that General Middleton made to our country as a military leader. I am an Army veteran myself, and I'm especially appreciative of the sacrifices and services that he rendered in that regard. But the fact that he was a great military leader doesn't erase the fact that as president of LSU, he held well-documented segregationist beliefs, and he conformed his actions to those beliefs. And it's those beliefs and not his military service that come to mind when students see his name on the library today. Even if this is not the message that was intended, it is the message that is being received. We know that because we've listened and we have heard. We cannot change the past, but neither should we live in it since we have the power and the ability to right wrongs and to move forward. This is an opportunity to do just that and be on the right side of history. And I know that it's uncomfortable to confront the ugly realities of the past, but it is the only way in which we can understand one another better and to move forward. We should all search our hearts and resolve to do better and to be better. And as we do so, I want to unequivocally state that black lives matter and that black students matter. LSU is my alma mater, and the alma mater states that it is a motor of mankind. So let's choose to mold future generations to lovingly see one another as equals and see all mankind as their brothers and sisters. We can do that. This will be a step in the right direction. So I want to thank you again for letting me be with you this morning. I appreciate your service to the state and to the university, and I'm aware that not everything that we do is pleasant, but what you're about today is important. So God bless you, and thank you.
Thank you, Governor. Thank you for taking the time to join us today. We appreciate your words and your continued leadership in a time that will definitely be remembered for all of history as Louisiana leads in the changes that, as you say, can be painful, come from difficult conversations, but do in fact help LSU conform to the motto that we all stand so proudly beneath. We appreciate your presence today. Due to the nature of our meeting electronically, we are unable to take public comment in person. However, we did post instructions. Would everyone please mute if you're not speaking? Thank you. We did post instructions on how to submit public comment, and we did receive submissions. Ms. Griffith will identify those who submitted public comment and their position on a matter coming before the board. Ms. Griffith?
There were 25 submissions for a public comment, all of which were related to the first item on the academic committee, request to remove name from university property. The following individuals were registered. Dr. Keon Anderson, Patrick Broderick, Autumn Ko, Lakeisha Duhon, Lee Enderson, Sydney Epps, Brian Falcon, Chelsea Fontenot, Christopher Francisco, Dick Juno, Unique Luna, Robert Mann, William McDonald, Sebastian Brumfield, Dee Murphy, Gabriel Olivier, John Prottevy, Luke Self, Susan Sheets, Melissa Tyler, Preston White, Terry Broussard-Williams, Tiara Williams, Sharon Weinstein, and Darlene Young.
Thank you. Mr. Armentor, would you please call the academic, I'm sorry. At this time, the full board meeting will recess, and we will begin committee meetings. Mr. Armentor, would you please call the Academic Affairs Committee to order?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Griffith, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Anderson? Mr. Armentor? Mr. Armentor?
Here.
Mr. Shadland? Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Perry? Mr. Yarborough? Mr. Armentor, there are not enough members for a quorum.
Well, that's a problem.
Per the bylaws, the chair will appoint Remy Starnes to the Academic Affairs Committee to serve today.
Done. With that, we should have a quorum. Am I correct, Madam Chair?
That's correct.
Okay, in that case, I call on our provo, Dr. Haney, to present the agenda item number one to the board.
Thank you, Supervisor Armentor. In accordance with the Board policy on naming of university facilities and Permanent Memorandum II, LSU's A&amp;M Campus Naming Committee took up the matter of removing the name of Troy H. Middleton from the main LSU library. The matter was approved unanimously and endorsed by the appropriate university officials, and I submit the matter to the committee.
Board members, we have two invited speakers in committee today. First, we'll have a friend of the Middleton family, Mr. Woody Jenkins. As I understand it, the family has met with members of the board prior to today. We wanted to honor their request to address the board publicly. In the interest of time, Mr. Jenkins, we will ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. Mr. Woody Jenkins?
I hope you can hear me. I've been having difficulty hearing, but you can get me okay, right? My name is Woody Jenkins, and I had the privilege of serving as a member of the House of Representatives from 1972 to the year 2000, representing Baton Rouge and LSU on many matters. And actually, during that time, I had the opportunity to get to know General Middleton as well, certainly a distinct honor. General Middleton was appointed president of LSU in 1951, and one of his first quests was to start a new library, which was greatly needed. The Board of Supervisors at that time preferred to spend money on the football stadium. General Middleton kept pressing for a library, and ultimately, it was built and opened in 1959. It wasn't until 1976 that General Middleton passed away. And in 1978, the LSU Board of Supervisors considered naming the library. One of the things that's interesting to me is that in 1978, the LSU Board of Supervisors was not made up of segregationists. It was entirely, 100% appointed by Governor Edwards. Some of them, I'm trying to find the list of members, but to my recollection, it was people like Camille Gravel and Shelley Baychok, and others who at that time were considered more on the liberal side of politics in Louisiana. But the board went through a process, and because General Middleton was so respected, not only for his accomplishments in the war, but also as a result of his work on the biracial commission. And I want to talk about that for a minute because much has been made of things that were said and done in the 1950s, but we really need to put it all in context of the entire history of this man. In 1965, right after the passage of the Civil Rights Act, Governor John McGiffen undertook to try to bring people together in Louisiana. And he appointed a biracial commission made up of 21 whites and 21 blacks. He tried to find the man who would be most respected in the entire state, be the chairman, and he named General Troy Middleton. He named the president of Dillard as the vice chairman, and they worked very closely together. During that time, five years, it was one of the more critical times in Louisiana in history, a time of great change, and most of it was very positive. There were crises. Those who were not alive and can't remember probably how much difficulty it was in trying to integrate the state. But General Middleton was at the forefront during crises in Alexandria, and Opelousas, and Farady, and Bogalusa. In fact, he instituted many changes. He urged the governor himself to hire more black members of his staff, and he led the fight to integrate the state police. When you look back at that, actually, the National Council of Christians and Jews named him the Man of the Year for his work in integrating our state, as did the Louisiana Association of Broadcasters. You know, to pull out one or two comments from the 1950s or early 60s do not tell the story of Troy Middleton because Troy Middleton is a man who was dedicated to the law. And he said at the time, he wanted to implement the civil rights law of the United States in Louisiana. When you go back, 1930, it was July, almost 90 years ago, Troy Middleton first arrived on the LSU campus as the commandant of cadets. He was already a national hero as a result of playing a leading role in the Battle of the Marne in World War I. He was actually the highest ranking person of his age in the entire war. He was 29 years old, a colonel. During the 1920s, he trained most of the military leaders of this country, including Dwight Eisenhower. So when he came to LSU as commandant of cadet, he actually already was greatly experienced in training young future officers. In fact, in World War II, every general officer in World War II in Europe had been trained by Troy Middleton. He came to LSU. He was still full-time military, but he was working and ultimately became dean of students. He left for a year in the Philippines and came back after he retired, 1939, and served here. When World War, when the LSU president was indicted, went to federal prison, it was put upon Troy Middleton as the business manager to put LSU back on firm financial footing, which he did. The war broke out in December, 1941. Immediately, he volunteered. He began to train a unit to go to Europe. He was named a major general. And his leadership were instrumental in the taking of Sicily, the taking of Italy, several days after his unit led in the Battle for Normandy, the capture of Brest. And one of the most significant things was in the Bastogne, his defense of Belgium, city of Bastogne during the Battle of the Bolts. Everyone who knows World War II history knows that Troy Middleton played one of the most important roles. As a matter of fact, his men discovered the first concentration camps where the Jews were being exterminated. And he's the one that brought the press of the world to see what the Nazis had been doing and which he brought the people of that German town to see. After the war, he came back to LSU, which had become by now his first law in the 1940s until his appointment as president in 1950.
Excuse me, Mr. Jenkins?
I just want to say one personal experience.
I have to limit your time.
Sorry, I can't hear.
Please limit your time to five minutes if you can. Wrap up if you would.
One final little personal anecdote. In 1984, we purchased this home that we live in here in Baton Rouge. It's beautiful. It has 12 beautiful oak trees, and the oldest one is almost 500 years old. When I purchased it, I found that it was called the Edwin Edwards Oak. And after having been an opponent of Governor Edwards on many issues, I was a little bit surprised, and people were asking me, would you rename it? Ultimately, Governor Edwards came here, and we told him, we're keeping it, the Edwin Edwards Oak. And really, that began a great friendship between him and me. We had disagreed on so much in politics, but we found that we had so much in common. And it was because I was willing to overlook our disagreements and recognize the great accomplishments of this man. With Troy Middleton, there's so much to be proud of. I don't think any student really should be ashamed of Troy Middleton when you take the whole context of his career in saving our country and also in the 1960s to 1970s as chairman of the biracial commission, bringing us together as a state.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. We also have a special guest, Katrina Dunn, the president of the AP Turo chapter of the LSU Alumni Association. Ms. Dunn, you also have five minutes. Thank you.
Can you see me? Good morning. My name is Katrina Dunn, and I'm the president of the LSU AP Turo Senior Black Alumni Chapter. Thank you for allowing me to address the board today. Turo chapter is committed to anti-racist initiatives that challenge oppression and promote diversity, inclusion, and belonging within an LSU system. As individuals and as an organization, we do not tolerate racism, hate, or bias. Covert and overt racism has an indelible impact on the social and emotional well-being of black students and the black alumni who support them. At this precipitous moment in LSU's history, and on Juneteenth, 2020, we, the LSU Black Alumni, strongly support the removal of the name Troy H. Middleton from LSU's library, a building that is central to all student life on campus. Middleton's resistance to desegregation and integration of black students and Negro athletes at LSU is well documented. Middleton's racist and segregationist stance and actions were fundamentally at odds with the university's current commitment to create an environment at LSU that embraces individual differences, advocates for social justice, and cultivates a campus atmosphere of inclusion. Your vote to remove Middleton's name from the library supports the mission of LSU and serves as a sincere gesture to promote diversity, inclusion, equity, belonging, and most importantly, long overdue healing. A name on a building is more than a name. It is a symbol. Symbols tell us who the important people are and are not. Symbols reinforce the aspects of a culture that are considered worthy or not. Troy H. Middleton believed black people were not important or worthy. Troy H. Middleton believed black people were not important or worth, and his idea cannot stand, and neither can a Middleton name on a building as important as a university library. Turo chapter enjoys a longstanding friendship with the Turo family and with AP Turo Jr., the first black undergraduate student to attend LSU, which happened to be during the presidency of Troy H. Middleton. Turo Jr. was subjected to treatment so egregiously racist in the fall of 1953 that he left in his first semester and did not return to LSU for nearly 40 years. Turo Jr.'s homecoming to LSU was ironically for the naming of a lecture hall in 1991 in honor of AP Turo Sr., Turo Jr.'s father, and the New Orleans Civil Rights Attorney who fought to integrate Louisiana State University. Let us be clear, this is not an erasure of history, it is a reckoning. Perhaps a better use of the Middleton name would be on an endowed chair for racial justice in higher education to attract a premier scholar who will conduct research on racial equity at colleges and universities. The LSU AP Turo Senior Black Alumni Chapter stands firmly in the belief that racial inequities must be confronted. For in the words of the late James Baldwin, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." Let LSU lead. Let LSU ring in a new day, and let the renaming of the university library be a first step toward the justice and legacy that LSU students, that all LSU students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn, very much. I'd now like to open it up to my colleagues for discussion. I hereby recognize Valencia Jones for comment.
Let me turn it over to Supervisor Starnes for one moment.
Mr. Armentor?
Yes, Supervisor Starnes.
In our materials of the proposed resolution, I would like to move to amend the proposal.
Mr. Starnes, I can barely hear you. Would you speak?
I cannot hear you, Mr. Starnes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I would like to move to amend the proposed resolution. Please, from the President, and the recommendation.
Mr. Starnes has a problem with the audio. Would you speak? Would you say it again, please, slower and louder?
I'm sorry, this is Jason. Mr. Starnes is making a motion to insert the words "from the President" after the word "recommendation" and before the phrase "to remove."
On the resolution.
Yes.
So the resolution, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agricultural and Mechanical College hereby approves the recommendation from the President to remove the name Troy H. Middleton from the main library at LSU A&amp;M.
Is there any objection to that amendment? There being none, the amendment carries. Mr. Starnes, anything else?
Now, Ms. Jones.
All right, Valencia, you're on.
First, let me say how extremely proud I am of the brave, intelligent, thoughtful black student leaders who've organized and made their voices heard over the past couple of weeks. You've been passionate, intentional, and inspirational. For many black students, faculty, staff, and alumni, the Middleton name on one of the campus's most prominent buildings is a symbol of oppression and lack of opportunity. By removing the reminders of racism and systemic oppression, we begin the action and dialogue of creating a more inclusive LSU, one that respects black voices, enriches their educational experience, and creates a better campus community for our black students. Let's be clear, this is the first of many actions to effectuate change toward a better LSU. We've talked the talk, now we must walk the walk. It is time to increase our efforts of recruiting, hiring, retaining black faculty, deans, vice presidents, campus leaders, leadership, and staff. It is critical that we provide these resources, support, and funding for our talented black students, faculty, and staff. Our distinguished Governor John Bell Edwards entrusted us, the men and women of the LSU Board of Supervisors, with the state's flagship university. I implore you, my fellow board members, to stand with me, a black LSU alum, in support of our black students, faculty, and staff, to provide the action needed to move us forward and create meaningful change. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Jones. I believe Stone Cox would also like to share thoughts, our new student, Stone Cox.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today is an exciting day in the long history of LSU. Today, we have a chance to take another step forward in the long journey of becoming a more inclusive and welcoming university. As a student representative on the board, it is my responsibility to advocate on behalf of students. I am proud to say they have made my job easy today. I'd like to take a moment to thank all of the amazing black student leaders who have worked so hard, both in the past and in the present, and who have fought for us to get to moments like this. To the black student leaders who fought to break countless color barriers set by individuals like Troy H. Middleton, and to the current black students who continue to push forward to take these systems down, I commend you. I'd like to thank the administration and countless board members who did not turn away and ignore the cries of these students, but rather bringing these individuals to the table and truly listening to them. And finally, now to my colleagues on the board. I ask, as your student representative, to listen to the outcry of the students here on LSU's campus and remove the name of Troy H. Middleton from the library. The students are ready for this. They're ready for real, substantial change to take place on this campus, and I expect myself and the board and the administration to continue moving forward to make changes on this campus and for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Cox. I now recognize our Chair-elect, Mr. Robert Dampf, for his comments. Robert, your audio may be off.
Is that better?
Yes, that's good.
Thank you, Mr. Armentor. Thank you, Madam Chair. Like all of my fellow board members, it is an honor to be a volunteer and serve on this board. We all have a commitment to this university. We all recognize that this has been a divisive and emotional issue. I have no hesitancy in voting to support this motion. It's been a difficult and emotional issue, but it's an easy vote to cast. Like the rest of my board members, I have reviewed the archival history. I don't intend to recite it. It's painful to read. It's painful to me. I can only imagine how painful it is to my black friends and to our black students. Our job today, and as we go forward, is to help build a sense of community. We want a great LSU. We want an LSU that has a sense of community and welcomes all students. College is hard. It's hard financially. It's hard academically. It's hard socially. It's hard emotionally. We don't need to do one thing to make it more difficult. We need to do everything to make it more welcoming. We need to promote the proper social and educational goals. While I'm sorry for the pain, obviously, that the Middleton family has felt, there's not an equivalency, in my view, for the pain suffered by my black friends and by our black students. I say again, a review of the record is truly painful. Today, we cast our vote, we express our opinion, and I hope we begin to move forward. We face many issues in higher education and here at our flagship. We have funding cuts. We have facility needs. We need to come together. We need to come together and build the kind of LSU that we all want. It needs to be the best flagship that it can be. It's important for our economy. It's important for our state. Most importantly, it's for the students of LSU, and that is our commitment. That is our job, the students of LSU. Thank you, Mr. Armentor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Dampf. The Chair now recognizes former Chair, James Williams.
Morning, everyone. I spent a considerable amount of time thinking about what I would say, because there is so much to say. But I do, my colleagues and our great Governor and the president of the AP Turo Alumni Association have really said a lot of what needs to be said today, and I would like to address some of what Mr. Jenkins said, because 50 years from now, when someone wants to look and see, why did we do this? I want the record to be clear. And I'll start with the comment by some that this was just the way it was at the time. Well, I'm a living witness that that's a lie. You see, my great-grandfather, a white man, married my great-grandmother, a black woman, in Mississippi in 1920, and they had 12 children, who had children, who had me. So that was not just the way it was at the time. To those who want to say that this was just a few stray comments, when I read in our archives a letter from General Middleton on May 1, 1956, saying, "I do not want Negro students in LSU. I believe in segregation of the races, and no matter what may come, I shall not associate with Negroes." And without exaggeration, I gagged, I physically gagged, when I read the minutes of the Board of Supervisors meeting where President Middleton said Louisiana State University has repeatedly made it clear it does not want Negro students. They attend LSU through no fault on the part of the university, which to date has done more than any institution, organization, or individual to try to preserve segregation in Louisiana. I gagged when I read that, to think that our university would do that. But we're living in a time now where the University of Alabama has taken down their three Confederate plaques, which were monuments to their students who served in the Confederate Army. Mississippi State and University of Mississippi have asked their state to take the Confederate flag off their flag, state flag. The University of Florida has banned gator bait chant because of its origins in hunters using black babies to hunt alligators during slavery. And now it is LSU's turn. What will we do with the baton now that it is in our hand? What will we say to those courageous students who have risked a lot to make their voices heard? And so I want to thank, starting with our Chair, Mary Werner, who has displayed incredible courage on this issue, from Robert Dampf to all of the rest of the members who have had to stay strong in the face of a lot of adversity in order to do what's right on this issue. But we are here today to do what's right, and I'm so glad that we are no longer at a university that would terrorize AP Turo, when he was the first black undergraduate student to enroll, and we've had discussions with him where he talked about how they beat him and harassed him and chased him around campus and kept him up all night while Troy Middleton sat in the President's office and didn't save that child. Dutch Muriel, the former mayor of New Orleans, the first African-American to graduate from the LSU Law School, then, once Dutch Muriel graduated, devised behind his back to never again have black students become lawyers through LSU. But notwithstanding that, LSU has produced some of the greatest lawyers, our Chief Justice, our General Counsel. So progress pushing past oppression is what's best for all. And so I urge my colleagues to consider that what we are potentially doing today is saying to black students on campus, you do matter, your feelings matter, and we want to make this an environment where you can be successful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Williams. The Chair now recognizes Supervisor Jimmy Woods. Jimmy, on mute. Jimmy, you need to unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On this exact day, Juneteenth, approximately 155 years ago, in 1865, enslaved Africans were free. That was approximately 89 years after America was established. It would be another 89 years until 1954, when African-Americans would be able to enjoy integration, with the passage of the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in Brown versus the Board of Education, wherein segregation was officially abolished. Despite the abolishment of segregation, people and institutions continued to fight against integration. And why? For no reason other than the level of melanin in our skin. On this historical day, we as a body must deliberate whether a building that was named in honor of a staunch segregationist should be renamed. As one emailer told me, "The renaming of Middleton Library disrespects and disbarges her Southern heritage." Well, we could talk about Southern heritage for a moment. With all due respect, I don't know about anybody else's Southern heritage, but I could talk about mine, what mine was like. It is filled with slaves' ancestors, it is filled with the pain of lynchings, it is filled with the pain of Jim Crow laws, it is filled with discrimination at every level. It is filled with hatred towards me and my race simply because of my race. So I ask, whose heritage is being disrespected and disparaged if the Middleton name remains? As an African-American who was born in 1957, at the height of Middleton's presidency of this institution, I am offended that there needs to even be a discussion about renaming a building that honors a man who, if he could, would have excluded not only people who look like me from this campus as a student, but who, over and over again, and as the record reflects this, was a staunch segregationist, who never believed that African-Americans belonged on this campus. It was not a blip in his lifespan, it was a decade in his life, 10 years, 3,650 days, 87,600 hours, 5,256 minutes. During these 5,256 minutes, he was a segregationist, which means in plain, simple terms, he was a racist. My parents, just like Middleton, were born in Mississippi. My father, just like Middleton, served this country as a soldier in the United States Army. However, unlike Middleton, my parents, who were born in the 1920s, never attained a college education, lived in poor, segregated parts of Mississippi that offered very little opportunity and options for African-Americans. So my father entered the military as a way to, quote, "make it," but serving in the segregated armed services was not an easy task, and after fulfilling his commitment, he moved on and moved to New Orleans. When I was born in 1957, three years after the Supreme Court's ruling, Brown v. Board of Education, my parents were relieved. As the fifth child of nine, my parents, for the first time, believed that I could have an educational experience different than their own, and certainly different than my older siblings. No longer will their child be relegated to separate but unequal education facilities. You see, despite the lack of education, they instilled core values of Christianity, education, in each of their children. In spite of their high hopes and dreams for me, there were people like Middleton, who for years after the Supreme Court's decision, made it his personal mission to not only encourage LSU board to disobey the Supreme Court decision, but continue to incite animosity toward the presence of African-Americans on LSU's campus. One of those persons was my mother-in-law, Merle Trish Harris, who was part- who was part of the second integrated class of LSU NO, a campus established by Middleton. When my mother-in-law entered college at LSU NO in the fall of nineteen fifty-nine, she was allowed to attend, attend classes with white students. However, she was denied service at the cafeteria facilities. She was prevented from being hired to work in the chemistry lab, where students could earn money that was reserved for whites only, despite the fact that her grade point average four exceeded those whites who were able to get the coveted laboratory positions. In addition, she was denied the opportunity to start a black sorority on campus as well. And you may be asking yourself, "Why is this relevant?" Well, you see, the Middleton was the president of LSU's system during this time. And based on the records, he set the tone for the African American experience on LSU's campuses. That tone was filled with animus, distaste, and disgust in having to allow, as he called them, Negroes, attend LSU's campuses. Thus, they were relegated to the only basics needed to get a degree, while their white counterparts could participate in anything they wanted, including setting up paternity sororities, which many of them date back to the early nineteen hundreds. I am not here to disparage Middleton or anyone's Southern white history, but I am here, as an African American male, to simply state history. I know that some of my words have probably made some of my colleagues a little bit uncomfortable, but in the words of the great Martin Luther King Jr., "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." So to the family members whom we want to shine a light on the good that Middleton did after he left his brother's presidency at LSU, I say, "Hold on to those memories, but they have no place here." But as the gospel song says, "Let the works I have done speak for me." Middleton's words during those five million minutes, when he was president of this university, are speaking loudly to me. They are speaking loudly to the ancestors, and they are speaking loudly to the next generation. We need to preserve history. I agree with that, but we need not honor every historical moment or every historical person. That should be reserved only for those who have done the most for the least of the people, and certainly, as the record reflects, that person is not Mr. Middleton. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you Supervisor Woods. We now give the honor of closing Supervisor's comments to our Chair Mary Werner.
Thank you, Mr. Armentor. I want to thank my fellow board members, the Governor, for attending our meeting today via Zoom, as well as the student leaders, who have worked very hard alongside us on this issue. We find ourselves at a time of a convergence of history. I have spoken with and read letters, emails, and texts from, I would say, hundreds of proud LSU alumni, men and women of several different generations. I want to first address my friends on the military history that they hold so dear at LSU. I have worked for many years on this board to continue to respect and elevate our current ROTC, our current leadership in the military education, honor and respect those students, and bring them forward, as well as honor and respect all those who have served our military to fight for freedom, the U.S. Constitution, and justice for this nation and for this state, so that all the citizens of Louisiana and any child that wants to attend Louisiana State University would be able to. We don't set out today to erase any part of history, the part that we all want to embrace and the parts that cause us pain and hurt. Everyone brings their own perspective to this conversation. I cannot stand in the shoes of my black colleagues. I come to this conversation as a white woman who, as an adult, began to understand the words "white privilege." For I had never had a door shut to me due to the color of my skin. I had had to work to get entrance to college, work to graduate high school, enter college, work to find my place in the community. But not once did I ever face discrimination because I was white. I don't stand here to disrespect the military service of Troy Middleton. I don't stand here to try to change or erase history. That cannot be done. LSU is the publisher of the biography of Troy Middleton. LSU is the repository of historical artifacts of Troy Middleton. Part of the job of an institution of education, and especially an institution of higher learning, is to examine the questions that we have and to learn from those who have come before us, but to instruct and educate the future leaders, the teachers, doctors, engineers, nurses, business people, bankers, attorneys, and all those who seek higher knowledge. LSU stands for that and stands proudly for that, and we have since our inception as a military institution. But in the year 2020, we once again find ourselves, as people did in the nineteen fifties and sixties, in the nineteen seventies, looking at our past and reconciling difficulty, discrimination. And we, this board and this administration, must now determine how LSU, Louisiana State University, the flagship of the great state of Louisiana, will move forward to offer education, enlightenment to every citizen who seeks that in these halls. I want to thank my colleagues for their heartfelt comments and the work they have joined in over the last several weeks. I want to thank our administration, and especially want to name Dr. Derek Rivera, Dr. Stacy Haney, and interim President Tom Galligan. They have led conversations among faculty and staff, participated in conversations with student leaders, black and white, for us to bring forward proposals to help move LSU forward in 2020 and to recognize not only a painful past, but to reconcile so that all students have equal opportunity under the law, but under the wishes and instruction of the Board of Supervisors. History will not be erased. It is well documented. But today, we can change the trajectory and the mission that is LSU by welcoming every student, young and old, black and white, any nationality, that they are welcomed. Their comments, their studies, their work here is valued and respected. Thank you to everyone who has reached out to us through all means, electronic and in person, to offer their comments, their thoughts, their memories, their suggestions. We have read all of them. I endorse the motion to remove the name Troy Middleton from the LSU library. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Chairman Werner. Supervisors, are there any questions? In that case, is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented and amended?
I move, I move that we pass the motion.
And I second.
I second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, I second.
Motion moved by James Williams, seconded by Valencia Jones. Is there any objection? Without objection, the resolution is approved. Ms. Haney, would you move to item number two, please?
Yes, so the second item before the committee today is a graduate certificate in crime mapping and geospatial intelligence analytics. This is an interdisciplinary program between sociology and geography and anthropology, and will train both traditional and non-traditional students, enhancing their career prospects in the criminal justice, intelligence, security analytics fields and academia, as well as nonprofit sectors. Students will be able to collaborate with local and state criminal justice agencies, and we project enrollment, five annually increasing to twenty-five per year, based on current enrollment.
Are there any questions on item number two? In that case, is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Who is that?
So moved, this is Lee.
Lee, and is there a second?
Second.
Who's our second?
Valencia.
Is there any objection to the item number two? Without objection, it is approved. Provohane, item number three.
Yes, so the next item is a request by the LSU A&amp;M campus for a graduate certificate in emerging information technologies in business. This will be a one hundred percent online certificate through the College of Business, consists of four courses comprised of topics focused on emerging information technologies. These are already courses taught as part of the online MBA program. And of course, this is part of our strategies around stackable credentials. We do have a graduate certificate in cloud computing and machine learning, but this is differentiated in that it focuses on information technologies as it is used in the business setting rather than a more computer science-focused program. The enrollment is expected to be ten students per year and is expected to grow to forty students within four years. And we believe there's significant demand for this certificate from the current MBA students and other non-business graduate students. So submit that to the committee.
Are there any questions? In that case, is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Ted Robert?
That's Lee.
Lee, Lee makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second by Valencia.
Is there any objection to item number three? Without objection, item number three is approved. Provohane, item number four.
Next is a request for full authorization from LSU Health Science Center, New Orleans, for the Center for Evidence-Based Practices in Behavioral Health. This center was given conditional one-year approval by the Board of Regents in June of last year, and it is now up for a full five-year approval. The center is a collaboration between LSU Health Science Center, New Orleans School of Public Health, the Department of Behavioral and Community Health Sciences, and the Louisiana Department of Health, Office of Behavioral Health, to support the state and its agencies, organizations, communities, and providers in the selection and implementation of evidence-based interventions to promote youth and family well-being, improve behavioral health outcomes, and to address challenges related to sustaining quality practice. In its inaugural year, the center has sponsored evidence-based training programs for four hundred and fourteen practitioners in the state of Louisiana and created web-based tools currently used by behavioral health professionals and stakeholders around the state. It has also served as an asset to the state by spearheading the shift towards greater access to quality, evidence-based behavioral health services in Louisiana. The center receives funding through a contract with the Office of Behavioral Health backed by Medicaid. And LSU Health Science Center, New Orleans, has been awarded another project contract for approximately eight hundred thousand dollars from July nineteen through, twenty nineteen through June twenty twenty of this year. And a three-year work order is currently being processed, which would secure funding for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three in the amount of two point seven million dollars. So we are requesting a extension of this center for a full five-year approval.
Thank you Provohane. Supervisors, are there any questions on item four? There being none, is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved by Lee.
Is there a second?
Second by Cox.
Second by our new student Supervisor. Are there any objections? Without objection, item number four is approved. At this time, Supervisors and ladies and gentlemen, I believe President Galligan is going to lead us on the next item. President Galligan.
Thank you Supervisor Armentor, and good morning to everyone. We have a PowerPoint that we're gonna, I think Nicole has, to talk about returning to campus. And I will say that I am especially happy to do this as part of the Academic and Research Committee meeting because it, it will be great to be physically back on campus, and we are excited about that. Campus reopening. First and foremost, safety will continue to be our guidepost. Safety for our students, safety for our faculty, safety for our staff and visitors. And the plans are subject to change based on the evolving COVID situation. We will take our lead from the CDC and from the Governor. And really, we've, we've been working on this since February. We've been working on this since before we closed. And I think we are all happy to be at this point. We are optimistic, but we are also careful and cautious. On campus in general, we will follow guidelines for face masks, for physical distancing, for washing our hands often, and for whenever we wash our hands, we'll wash them for at least twenty seconds, for coughing into our sleeves. And we'll do the same thing in residence halls when people are entering and exiting residence halls. And as I look at Stone Cox, the student leader, and we've talked about this before, we're gonna need real cooperation and buy-in and education. Our faculty, our staff, and our students make sure that, 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 that we realize, hey, this is really important. And I will reiterate on masks, the mask, mask is a golden rule sort of a thing. It's a do unto others. I wear a mask to protect you, and please you wear a mask to protect me. Now let's move to the next slide. I'm gonna start with the second bullet, just to mix it up a little bit. There will be classes that are in There will be classes that are in-
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Can everybody turn their microphone off, please? We're getting a lot of interference. Turn your microphone off if you're not gonna be speaking shortly. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
No, no, that's okay, thank you. We will have some classes that will be in person, just almost like normal. We will have others that will be a hybrid with some in-person and some remote learning. So I may be in a class on Tuesday and Thursday where I'm in the class on Tuesday, and the other half is remotely participating, and on Thursday, they'll be physically in the class, I'll be remotely participating. We will also have universal implementation of live streaming and/or lecture capture. Why are we doing that? Because there may be a student who is at particular risk at a particular time and can't physically be in class. There may be a student who contracts COVID and is in isolation. Well, we want that student to be able to still participate in their education as it goes on. Other classes will be remote, larger classes will be remote. For those classes that aren't remote, classroom occupancy will be limited to 50% maximum. So if a room has a capacity for 100, there'll only be 50 students in the room. And again, in class, we will, students will wear masks. There will be physical distancing to the maximum extent possible and enhanced cleaning. So I'll pause there and ask the Provost if she wants to add anything, if I've forgotten something, or if anyone has any questions for her or me on class.
Any questions?
I don't have a question about class, but I do have a question sort of off-topic but related to COVID-19. Has any consideration been given to going test optional, given the difficulty some students have faced in taking the ACT this year due to COVID-19?
We were given that flexibility, and we have been attentive to that, very attentive to that. Any student who struggled with being able to take either the ACT or the SAT, we have had the ability to work with that student, yes.
Okay.
Now, the question is for next year, and I think we also have to be very mindful for next year because that continues to be a challenge for our students.
Right. Well, doing as much as we can to support our students and help them through this is greatly appreciated, so thank you for that.
Any other comments or questions, supervisors?
On class?
Go ahead.
All right, should we move to the next slide?
Absolutely.
Testing. We have, and I'll describe it this afternoon in my report, we have a wonderful research testing protocol where we will test 10% to 16% of our students across every member of the LSU family, across demographic groups, so we can see potential disparate impacts. We'll do virology testing, which in February, I couldn't have told you what that was, but what it is, is do I have COVID-19 or do I not? Am I negative or positive? We'll do antibody testing. Do I have the antibodies for COVID-19? We'll test that same group throughout the course of the semester. We will obviously have other tests available or opportunities to be tested available for students outside the research group who may have symptoms, who have a recommendation from a healthcare provider to be tested. We will have plans in place, we do, for isolation of those students who test positive. And we will be using a contact tracing platform that will minimize, we believe, any intrusions into student privacy, but it will help us identify students and employees who have COVID-19 and where they may have been on our campus and what they may have done. And a group of five researchers across the LSU family put this together, and Kena Arbuthnot from our Office of Research and Economic Development, who's a professor in education, is now doing a fantastic job working and leading those five to turn this plan into a reality, and we are partnering, it looks like, with Southern on this, so that'll be a historic partnership of our two institutions. I know everybody's wondering about the residence halls, and that is a signal for us to move to the next slide. We're gonna increase staff in the residence hall to provide more extensive cleanings than normal. We also have electrostatic sprayers and ozone machines that we can use to clean. We were actually ahead of the curve on this before we helped to flatten it because of our mumps issues last year. So we have these ozone machines that we can use for cleaning. We will have the library, the union, the bookstore, and the dining halls open, but they will probably have capacity restrictions and may otherwise need to alter their operations. Events may need to be altered, smaller, or postponed. We've already decided that we're gonna postpone our summer commencement as we go forward and prepare for opening in the fall, and we'll invite those graduates back at a later time. But on the facilities and enhanced cleaning issue, Executive Vice President of Finance and Administration, Dan Lysell, is with us, so if anyone has any questions for me or Dan on residential life, events, and cleaning, I will pause now.
Any questions? No questions.
Okay, well, Mr. Chair, that is our plan in five slides. It takes a lot more pages when you see it written down, but we will be sharing those with y'all in the very, very near future. So thank you very much for listening to our report, and I thank my colleagues, Stacy, Dan, and everyone, Jake Palmer in the EOC, and the faculty and staff who have just been phenomenal throughout in shutting down and now getting ready to open back up again. So I thank them, and I thank you all.
Mr. President, it is a rock star plan. Great job.
Thank you.
I will now accept the motion to conclude the academic committee. Do you have a motion to conclude our committee? I'm not hearing a motion to conclude the committee.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dampf. Is there any objection? Without objection, the committee is adjourned. Madam Chair, the academic committee has concluded its work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armentor. Thank you, members of the committee. I would ask Mr. Blossman to please convene the finance committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Griffiths, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shatterland? Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox? Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones? Mr. Mallett? Mr. Moore? Mr. Perry? Mr. Yarborough? Going back to Ms. Jones? Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Blossman, you have a call.
Okay, thank you. Valencia is back there somewhere, she's just not unmuted. But Mr. Lysell, would you please present the items?
Yes, Mr. Blossman, members of the board, good morning. The first item is a request for approval of the fiscal year 2020 supplemental appropriation and fiscal year 2021 appropriation for the university. Each June, the Board of Supervisors authorizes the distribution of supplemental state appropriations prior to the end of the current fiscal year and the distribution of next year's state appropriation prior to the start of the new fiscal year. The board then approves the university's annual operating budget at their September meeting. This item and resolution address the first of those steps. Regarding the fiscal year 2020 supplemental appropriation, House Bill 307 of the 2020 regular legislative session provides a number of amended appropriations for fiscal year 2020, which I will summarize. In that bill, there was $23.3 million in additional fees and self-generated revenue authority due to enrollment changes that were not reflected in the original fiscal year 2020 appropriations bill last year. And this additional authority was for LSU A&amp;M, LSU Alexandria, LSU Shreveport, and the Health Science Center at Shreveport. There was also $26,000 for the LSU, the University Lab School payable out of the Education Excellence Fund, which is a statutory dedicated fund. There was just under $45,000 also appropriated for the University Lab School payable out of the State General Fund due to changes in the minimum foundation program for all public schools across the state. And there was $29.4 million that was appropriated for all of our campuses payable out of the State General Fund via federal COVID-19 relief funds received by the state. This amount is intended to partially offset the expected reduction in fiscal year 21 State General Fund support that I'll touch on in a minute. Campuses are going to need to submit approved reimbursable expenses in order to realize these additional revenues, and we have begun that process as we speak. In terms of the fiscal year 2021 appropriation, the General Appropriations Bill HB1 is currently being considered in the Legislative Special Session, which is scheduled to adjourn no later than 6:00 PM on June 30th. The current version of HB1 includes a total of $993.2 million in operating budget support for the LSU system for fiscal year 2021, a $4.5 million or 0.5% reduction from FY2020 levels. As previously mentioned, the $29.4 million provided in the FY2020 supplemental appropriation was intended to partially offset the fiscal year 2021 reduction in State General Fund of $35.7 million. The net effect is an expected $6.3 million or 1.7% reduction in state funding across the LSU system in fiscal year 2021. The State General Fund amount for fiscal year 2021 also includes the following line item appropriations. There is $2 million for the LSU Ag Center, $1.75 million for Pennington, and $1.1 million for the LSU Health Science Center of Shreveport for the Louisiana Poison Control Center. As I mentioned earlier, this is really the first step in the process of budget building for the next year, and we will be bringing back the final fiscal year 2021 university operating budget for your consideration and approval at your September 11th meeting. Happy to answer any questions you might have, and I would ask for your approval.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
Wayne Brown, yes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Brown, seconded by Mr. Dampf. All right, it's approved.
The second item is a request to approve a restricted account for the University Lab School. In June 1999, the board approved tuition increases for the University Lab School of $765 that were phased in over the 2001 and 2001-02 academic years. The purpose of those tuition increases at the time was to cover debt service for renovation and new construction projects at the University Lab School, including cafeteria and classroom additions. Those were approved by the Board of Supervisors in the legislature, and the intent was to fund those through revenue bonds, which were subsequently issued in the total of 5.5 million. The revenues generated by those increases are deposited in a restricted account solely dedicated to the debt service for those projects and cannot be used for anything else at this point. Over time, due to the way in which the debt was structured, the annual debt service payments have decreased, resulting in an annual surplus in these restricted tuition funds of approximately $261,000 this fiscal year, and this amount is expected to grow further in future years as the annual debt service requirement continues to decrease. Again, under the original resolution in 1999 that the board approved, the incremental revenues that were generated by those tuition increases can only be used for debt service for the cafeteria and classroom addition projects. Over time, the operating budget needs of the University Lab School have continued to grow, while the primary revenue sources that fund the University Lab School budget, which is state funding through the minimum foundation program and student tuition, have remained relatively stable. This request seeks to reallocate a portion of the restricted funds that are no longer needed to fund debt service requirements for new use in the University Lab School operating budget, subject to presidential approval. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and I would ask for your approval.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
It's moved by Mr. Dampf. Is there a second?
Yes, Wayne Brown.
Wayne Brown, seconds. Any objection? Without objection, it's approved. Next item, Mr. Lysell.
The third item is a request from the Health Science Center, Shreveport, to approve the fiscal year 2021 expenditure of Carol Feist Legacy Funds for the Feist-Wiler Cancer Center, and for the board to make determination of acceptable university purpose for these funds. Each June, the Health Science Center at Shreveport brings forth a request for approval of funding from the Carol Feist Legacy Account to support programs and activities at the Feist-Wiler Cancer Center. The agreement that establishes the legacy account requires Board of Supervisor review and approval for any budget request exceeding $1 million. The fiscal year 2021 request totals $4.35 million and will be used to fund a variety of basic and clinical research activities, faculty recruitment packages, and other research infrastructure needs, including equipment and facilities modifications. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have and would ask for your approval.
Okay, any questions? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Brown. We have a second?
Second by Mr. Dampf.
Second by Robert. Is there any objection? Without objection, it's approved. Next item, Mr. Lysell.
Thank you. The last item is a request from LSU Shreveport to revise their athletic scholarship policy. The proposed provisions being sought by LSU S are consistent with the standards and guidelines set forth by the NAIA, which is their athletic governing body for a competitive athletic department. The revisions to the policy allow for the provision of an athletic scholarship while a student athlete works toward meeting athletic eligibility requirements. Additionally, the revised policy also allows for graduate student athlete to receive an athletic scholarship and for student athletes to be awarded athletic scholarships in the summer in addition to the fall and spring terms. Athletic scholarships are funded through LSU S athletic revenues, and no additional financial impact to the university is anticipated. I know Chancellor Clark is on Zoom for the meeting, and I don't know if he had anything he'd like to add about this.
Yeah, that's good. I'm here to answer questions for our needs.
Okay, colleagues, do you have any questions? All right, is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
Wayne Brown, so moved.
Robert Dampf, second.
Mr. Brown's made the motion, Mr. Dampf has seconded. Is there any objection? Without objection, it is approved.
Thank you.
I will accept the motion to conclude the committee.
So moved, Jake, by Robert.
It's been moved to conclude the meeting by Robert. Is there a second?
Second, Wayne Brown.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any objection? Without objection, the committee is adjourned. Without objection, the committee is adjourned. Madam Chair, the academic, I mean, the academic, not the academic, the Finance Committee has concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Blossman. Mr. Woods, would you please convene the Property and Facilities Committee?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Ms. Griffith, please call a roll.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Shaillan? Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Ms. Jones.
Mr. Mallett? Mr. Moore? Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough?
We could do that.
Hey, Mr. Woods, you have a call.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Tony Lombardo to please present the items for today.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. We have but one item, request from LSU Agricultural Center to approve a cooperative endeavor agreement for a rice mill to be located in Crowley, Louisiana. The cooperative endeavor agreement is on behalf of LSU Ag Center with Rush Rice Products LLP for providing equipment and expertise for operation of a pilot-scale rice mill capable of providing milling services to Louisiana rice growers interested in establishing their own consumer rice products. At Rush Rice Products LLP sole expense, they will remove the pilot rice mill from its current location on the Ag Center campus in Baton Rouge and relocate the mill to Crowley, Louisiana. The contractor shall bear all expenses associated with the operation and maintenance of the mill, and shall make the mill available for at least 20% of the time on a monthly basis during normal operating hours for the milling of rice from third-party rice growers or individuals interested in using the mill to produce a rice product. In consideration of the services outlined in the CEA, the contractor hereby agrees to pay the state a monthly rental fee of $800.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Are there any questions on the item, committee members? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Williams, second.
Second, Wayne Brown.
Second by Mr. Brown. Is there any objections? Without objection, it is approved.
Excuse.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Woods. I was actually away from my desk at the time when roll was called, but this is Valencia Jones, and I am here.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Ms. Griffith, please let the record reflect Ms. Jones' presence.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'll accept the motion to conclude the committee business today. Is there a motion?
So moved, Wayne Brown.
Moved by Mr. Brown, is there a second? Second by Mr. Williams. Without objections, Madam Chair, look like that concludes our business for today, this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Ms. Jones, would you please convene the Athletic Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Griffith, please call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Armenter? Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. This time of year, we would normally be celebrating our student athlete's success in baseball, softball, and track and field. Instead, we're celebrating the remarkable efforts of athletic staff and coaches under the leadership of Scott Woodward to safely welcome back our student athletes to campus. Football student athletes are in voluntary workouts already, and preparations are being made for the return of other sports. This is unprecedented, and we want to recognize these historic efforts made by hundreds of LSU athletics staff to keep our student athletes safe and prepare for a fall that we hope is complete with all sports. On behalf of the Board, thank you to all of the athletic staff for your efforts. At this time, I ask that Chancellor Clark presents item number one.
Thank you. Item number one is, involves two coaches. The first is a new contract, our basketball coach's contract, Kyle Blankenship, has expired, and so this is a new three-year contract for him. Kyle has had tremendous success at LSU S this year when the unfortunate NAIA tournament did not happen. We were number three ranked in the country. We were the top seed going into the NAIA. We had three All-American players this year on our basketball team for Kyle's team. Last year, we had Jeff Garrett was the 2019 NAIA Player of the Year on his team. Kyle has had three straight first-team All-Americans the past three years of his contract that he's been on. He has been involved with his players and community service activities. I'm really proud of that, what he does. He has brought up the academic performance level of his team and what they have achieved, and that's been a significant goal for us, for him. So this is a renewal of his contract. It's the same contract he's had before. It does have an increase. It puts him in a similar contract salary range as Coach Larry Cordero at LSU A. And I will tell you that the competition between LSU A and LSU S is exceptional, and those are two of the finest coaches in NAIA, Kyle Blankenship and Lefty Cordero. Do you want to handle one contract at a time, or should I go ahead and do both of them?
We can do both of them at the same time, Chancellor, if you don't mind.
Very good. The second, our soccer coach, who is completing his third year with us, was given an offer from another institution. He was not seeking a job that came to him. We are proposing a counteroffer. It continues his second and third year of his existing contract. It does give him an increase in salary. It is not as high as the offer which he was given, but it does give him greater amount of money to remain with us. In his first three years with us, he, it's the first time that we've had a soccer, men's soccer team win the conference tournament. He's qualified for the first national tournament. He won Coach of the Year this past year. His team grade point average is 3.12 with 18 student athletes with above a 3.0 average. He has been very helpful with us. We had our female soccer coach left us, and he's been very helpful in the transitions. We brought in a new coach, which you approved last meeting. He was very helpful in the interim in supporting our women's soccer athletes. So he has been very strong for the performance of his team. He also is involved with things in the community, and we put him forward to retain him with making the adjustment. And those are the two before you today.
Thank you, Chancellor. Very impressive. Are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to recommend both of the proposals as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, was that moved by Mr. Cox, Supervisor Cox?
By Blossman, Jay.
Blossman, thank you, Supervisor Blossman, and seconded by Supervisor Woods?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is there any objection? Without any objection, the motion is approved. Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you.
Mr. Ewing, will you please present the next item on the agenda?
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Good morning, everyone. Great seeing y'all's faces again, even though it's virtual. First of all, I did want to welcome the new student board member, Mr. Cox, to the, to the gang here, and we all like to work together, and we look forward to working with him during the upcoming year. Since the last meeting, I just wanted to point out that two male athletes won some great awards here, just to point it out, is Joe Burrow won the Roy F. Kramer SEC Male Athlete of the Year Award, and our great basketball player and local guy, Skylar Mays, won the McWhorter Award, which goes to the top scholar athlete in the league. Two great accomplishments by two great athletes, just wanted to recognize that. Now, on to the coaches. As you can see, we have 11 items here, so I'll try and go through them as quick as I can. First of all, is Coach Bill Armstrong. He's just completed his third year as an assistant basketball coach. The item we requesting here is to give him a $50,000 increase and a two-year contract. He was part of last year's SEC championship team and staff. Very good coach. Second and third people on the agenda are, I'm speak to them, and together, they're co-head coaches of our men's tennis team. What we're requesting here is no increase in pay, however, we did want to give them a one-year extension. All these sports we're talking about today, their seasons were shortened by the virus, and they were, they were, had started off the season well at 10 and 6, so they're just finished their third season. Next up, we'd like talked about this Coach Russell Brock. He's a head coach of our US sport, beach volleyball. It's come a long way in a short period of time. His team was finished the season when it was canceled. They were the number one team in the country, and they were very much looking forward to going to Gulf Shores and hopefully bringing back a trophy to us, but the virus shortened his season. He's one of the best in the country. Last year, they finished third. This contract gives him a five-year contract and increases him from $90,000 to $100,000, and he'll get a $5,000 increment for the remainder of the years. Next up is a head coach, Dave Geyer, of the swim team. Basically, there's no funds involved here. It's just an extension to his contract to June 30th of 2023. His assistant coach, Steve Miller, that action is to promote him from assistant coach to associate head coach, along with giving him a $10,000 raise from 48,000 to 58,000. It's still a one-year contract, but it recognizes his tenure here. Next up is another men's assistant basketball coach. That was recently, this is to appoint him as an assistant coach. Last year, he has served on the staff as an assistant to the head coach, to Coach Wade. So this is putting him in an assistant coaching position that was vacated by Coach Hare. So this contract is a two-year contract for 300,000. And between the two men's basketball transactions, it basically is a net zero effect on our operating budget. I just wanted to point that out. Next up on the list is Coach Garrett Runyon. He was in a, he was in the middle of a great season. They had won, they were six golf tournaments this spring and finished second in the couple. So he had a good year. His, one of his freshmen finished as SEC Women's Golf Athlete of the Year and SEC Freshman of the Year, so they got a good future in that program. This is to increase them from $110,000 to 140,000, which will put him more of in the middle of the pack since he's, his first year, he made the NCAA tournament, and this year, they were well on the way. It also gives him a $5,000 increase for the remaining two years of the three-year contract. The next two coaches are our women's tennis head coaches, their co-coaches. This, what we're proposing is to give them a extra two years from their current contract, so it would extend them from 2021 to 2023. There's no change in salary, but it does give them the opportunity to talk to recruits and let them know that they're here for, till 2023. And last but not least, is a head coach of our diving program, Doug Schaefer. It's to give him, and this is a proposal to give him a contract extended to 2023, no change in salary, but we wanted to give him a few extra years, and he's, coaches one of the best diving athletes in the country. So all these coaches are what we felt were deserving, even though they weren't able to finish their season of extensions or pay increases or both. And that would be it, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Are there any questions? If none, is there a motion to recommend the proposal, all of the items as one?
Wayne Brown, so moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Jay?
Thank you, Supervisor Blossman. Is there any objection? Without objection, it is approved. I will accept a motion to conclude the Athletics Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Supervisor Starnes, seconded by?
Ms. Jones. Excuse me, Ms. Jones.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe we have a supervisor who would like to make some comments during the process, before the Athletics Committee is adjourned. Would you please recognize Supervisor Armentor?
Absolutely. You have the floor, Supervisor Armentor.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Madam Chair. I'd like to remind the Board of our plenary discussions on the naming of the Pete's Palace Basketball Floor for Coach Dale Brown. We are living, thankfully, in an age of increased awareness of the need for mutual respect among the races. Coach Dale Brown has worked proactively toward this goal since he first came to LSU in 1972 as head coach of men's basketball. He hasn't just talked the talk, he has walked the walk. He has actively campaigned for equal rights for all and worked to improve race relations during times of racial strife in Baton Rouge in the 1970s and 1980s. He was the first coach at LSU to take in African-American players, and he was the first in the SEC to hire black assistant coaches. And very importantly, he fought for more than a decade to reform NCAA rules governing student athletes. He felt strongly that the NCAA legislates against human dignity, so he set out to reform the system, and he succeeded. The movement he led resulted in the NCAA changing 32 of the 43 rules that he targeted. Nationwide, student athletes, including minority students, continue to benefit today, financially and otherwise, from the work that Coach Dale Brown did. Not only did LSU students benefit, but so did those in all 350 NCAA schools in Alabama, Texas, Florida, California, et cetera. This is one of the many reasons why our university should proudly recognize Coach Dale Brown in a permanent, meaningful way. We should name the basketball court at the PMAC, the Dale Brown Court. Madam Chair and Madam Chair, I will be moving this motion on to our next agenda if I am so fortunate as to have your acquiescence. Thank you for listening, and let's honor Dale Brown, who now is 84 years old and certainly deserves this honor. Thank you very much for letting me make the point.
Thank you, Supervisor Armentor. I will now accept a motion to conclude the Athletics Committee.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Starnes, is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Supervisor Woods. Is there any objection? Without objection, the committee adjourned. Madam Chair, the committee has concluded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones and Mr. Armentor. Mr. Mallett, will you please convene the Audit Committee? Mr. Mallett, would you please convene the Audit Committee? Mr. Mallett, would you please convene the audit committee?
Okay, please call the role.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Armentor?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Shadalan? Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Starnes? Mrs. Starnes? Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Griffith, I'm not sure if you could hear Supervisor Starnes, but he is here.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Hey, Mr. Mallett, you have a call.
Chad, would you like to go over the proposals you have?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item for the agenda today that requires committee approval, our FY 2021 internal audit plan. And we have a short PowerPoint. Thank you, Nicole. So the audit plan document provides information on internal audits' role, focus, budget, our planning and risk assessment process, as well as the risk-based audits included in the proposed plan. Next slide, please. Internal audit's role includes the evaluation of the university's governance, risk management, and internal control structure. We accomplish this by focusing on the effectiveness of management's risk mitigation strategies and activities. Next, next slide, please. As you can see, it's anticipated that our staffing and overall budget for FY 21 will be consistent with current year's staffing and budget levels. Next slide. In terms of our risk assessment process, we have an established methodology that involves gathering information from a number of sources, including various levels of university management, financial, industry trends, and other risk assessment. So the pie chart on this slide reflects the breadth of internal audit coverage of the university's major functional areas. The plan also budgets time for unscheduled projects that may be performed at management's request. The plan lays out a number of audits in each of the functional areas to be addressed. Many of these audits will be performed enterprise-wide or will involve multiple campuses. Additional details regarding the plan are included in Appendix A, which constitutes the last two pages of the audit plan document. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? If not, Chad, is this for informational purposes or do we need a motion?
No, we, we need a vote, please.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion in a second on this presentation.
I'll move through.
Okay, we have a motion in second, is there any opposition? If not, the motion carries. I think that concludes our presentation, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I move adjourn.
We had a motion and seconded adjourned. That concludes our presentation, Madam Chair. Hello?
Thank you, Mr. Mallett.
Thank you.
At this time, the recess of the Board has ended, and the Board will now return to order. For the Board's approval, are the minutes of the Board meeting held on May 22nd? These minutes were previously provided. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I will now accept one motion to adopt the minutes of the meeting.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Woods, is there a second?
Second, Robert Dampf.
Thank you, Mr. Dampf. Is there any objection? Without objection, the minutes are approved. Due to our format for this meeting, the Council of Staff Advisors provided their report in writing, which has been distributed to supervisors. I would like to highlight a couple of items. All campuses reported, staff reported their work in returning to business on their campuses. The continued conversations around diversity and inclusion being held in many of our facilities, being participated in by our staff. Also, LSU A staff is working on participating in the sixtieth anniversary to be celebrated in September. I'd like to commend all of our staff and faculty for the continued work through the online education. Faculty who have had to learn new skills, develop new talents, upload content, their work to staff and faculty to help register students for the fall semester, to provide support to students. I know as a mother of a junior at LSU, that his ability to reach out to faculty and staff, to have questions answered and assistance through his registration process has been invaluable. It has heartened me to see the lengths to which the faculty and staff, the chancellors, our executive vice presidents, everyone at LSU is going to. And I wanted to thank everyone, faculty and staff and administration for all the work. At this time, I will entertain the President's report and introduce once again interim President Tom Gallagher.
Thank you, Chair Werner. I said good morning the last time I spoke, now I will say good afternoon. And I will begin with an apology. In my enthusiasm to tell you all about the reopening of campus in Baton Rouge, I neglected to ask my good friends, the leaders of our other campus units, to say a word or two about their return to campus. So I offer my apology to them, and now I'd like to ask each of them to take just a minute to discuss reopening of their campuses. And let's start with Paul Correll, LSU Alexandria.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everything you said, I will say we're doing pretty much the same thing. The only thing I'll add is we're adding additional days and hours to our student health center for obvious reasons, to help with student health availability, as well as to do more testing, both for the study and for any students and athletes in particular that we need to test more frequently that may be coming back for sport and athletic events this fall. We're going to do a lot more frequent cleaning before and after classes and pretty much follow the same protocol that you mentioned. So I'm going to stop there because I know time is of the essence, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank, thank you, Paul. Chancellor Nancy Sorensen of LSU Unis.
Thank you, President Gallagher, and I am, I'm proud to be here in front of the Board of Supervisors. LSU E is now in phase three of its reopening for the fall. Like LSU Baton Rouge and our colleagues across the state, we are planning for every possible outcome for the fall. Our schedule will look a lot like it is at Baton Rouge with a combination of in-person, hybrid, and online instruction. We have a campus committee that is working diligently toward the reopening of the task force. And we have modeled our strategies on what we have developed as a system in order to be ready for the fall. We are very much looking forward to the opening of our fall semester, as are our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Chancellor Larry Clark, LSU Shreveport.
Thank you. Like everyone has been saying, we're focused on safety. And we have put together a pandemic, pandemic action team that is hard at work. We know every classroom by now how much space in there is, what can be in there. All the large lectures, as President Gallagher said, for those lecture halls where we don't have too many of those. But anyway, we're working with making those smaller, creating more sections so that we have less interaction of the students. We are prepared as best we can. People keep saying, are you for sure going to be open in the fall semester? And we continue to say it is our expectation that we will be open for face-to-face students in the fall semester. And everything we're doing is committed to that. Having said that, we also have, as my colleagues do, have contingency plans. So you have to have a contingency plan behind a contingency plan, but we have those in place also. But we expect to be face-to-face. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Larry. And I know the Health Science Centers have never really shut down, but Chancellor Ollier, reopening update?
Thank you, President. As you mentioned, we did not fully shut down. We moved to remote classes, but kept our student housing open. And our residents and faculty continue to care for patients of the pandemic here in New Orleans. We instituted multiple safety measures and have already started, restarted our new class of physician assistant students which have come in. As the students of the larger schools return over the next two weeks, we have made more specific arrangements in that housing will have a limit, a maximum of two students to a room. We have separate quarters available for those who might test positive or who need to be quarantined. Our cafeteria will continue to offer takeout. And in the cafeteria itself, we have reduced seating and distance, distance seating. Classroom attendance also will have reduced numbers and distance seating. For all faculty and staff, we are also offering free antibody testing to all faculty, staff, and students. Any positive test would, on the same time, get an acute viral test as well. And we will also use the apps to monitor health and to look at contact management. All faculty, students, and anybody who has patient interactions in our hospitals will also have mandatory testing performed by the hospitals.
Great, thank you very much. Moving from New Orleans to Shreveport, Chancellor Golly.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors. As the President and Chancellor Ollier mentioned, we have not closed at all during this period of time either. We went into phase one, May 12th, and phase two, June the 8th. And hopefully, we'll anticipate going into phase three in late June or early July pending the Governor's Council. We are, our emerging viral threat lab is continuing to work hard. We've basically tested, I believe, every single student, resident, faculty member, and administrative person on our campus and in all of our schools, both in Monroe and in Shreveport. And we're providing both viral and antibody testing. And we're continuing to have restricted access to the campus, restricted entry points where we're still checking everyone's temperature, having available hand sanitizer. Again, as Chancellor Clark mentioned, safety is our priority. I will tell you, we are a bit concerned about the uptick in some cases that we're noting in the Lake Charles, Lafayette, and Monroe area. We're continuing to monitor this with the Department of Health. We're continuing to help the Department of Health in doing testing for the nursing homes and in some of the incarcerated congregual situations that we have in Louisiana. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Golly. And while the Ag Center does not have students in and of itself, they are returning to work. And let my, ask my friend, Vice President and Dean Bill Richardson, to tell us about the Ag Center.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we are continuing operations as this fifth development, so we are doing all of our summer field days virtually. And we're getting great participation by farmers and businesspeople who want to participate in the Rice Day, the sugarcane field day, and the others like that around the state. A couple of developments that might be quite interesting to the Board. This time of the year, we would have 450 students at our summer camp, 4H Camp in Camp Grant Walker. We're doing a virtual camp this year, and we've had as many as 3,000 students sign up for the virtual camp, not only in Louisiana, but all over the United States. And it's been very successful in terms of getting the kids doing something productive as a, not as same as being in there in person, but very, very productive. And also 4HU, we'd have 1,500 students on campus this week and experiencing the 4H University, and they're doing that virtually, and we're very pleased, pleased with that. Our 64 parishes come under the OEP guidelines of the parishes. And so we've had various forms of reopening, and we've kept our research stations open, practicing social distancing to keep our research going. So very pleased where we are right now and looking forward to hopefully getting more of our people back at work as soon as we can. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you, Bill. And now the Executive Director of the fabulous Pennington Biomedical Research Center, John Kerwin.
Afternoon, everybody, thank you, President Gallagher. Just to reiterate, safety first is also Pennington's motto. And we have been suspended, well, we did suspend operations in mid-March. And we have, we are currently in phase two of what we call our reopening, which means that we have a good number, I would say ninety percent of our workforce are back on campus. And we are accommodating all of the safety requirements by carefully screening everybody. We have a requirement that folks wear masks, that they wash their hands, and that they maintain clean environments. We have made accommodations in terms of spacing or any kind of need that's there in terms of distancing to ensure that we can meet that requirement. So we are actively in phase two. I would say that for two, we have two big components. Our clinical research, which really got hit hard by the suspension of activity, is currently at about fifty percent of capacity. And we are gradually, slowly, cautiously ramping that up. And we're hoping that once we move into phase three, after the Governor's next decision, that that will become fully operational. Our preclinical operation is now at about seventy-five, eighty percent, and we continue to ramp up there. So everything has been pretty smooth, I'm very pleased to report, and I thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, John. So now, now you have heard how LSU is planning to reopen in full. And I want to thank all my colleagues who lead the other campuses for the fantastic work that they have done as well. I'm turning now to my report. I want to begin by thanking all the Board members who have been with us at length over the last couple of weeks and who joined us for our meeting last Wednesday evening with student leaders to discuss the concrete steps our university is taking and will take to foster a more inclusive and diverse campus culture. As I said last week, the students with whom we are meeting are passionate about strengthening our great university. They're a fantastic group, and by hearing and listening to their concerns and responding with action, we can and will make LSU a better place for everyone in our campus community. And while I'm talking about what happened in Baton Rouge, we all across the entire LSU family feel this way and will do this work together. Our students have responded to recent tragedies involving racial violence against people of color by turning adversity into advocacy. Our university must take this opportunity to prove that when we say we're committed to eliminating inequality, racism, and barriers that any members of our LSU community face, we're not just talking, we're walking, and we're acting. As human beings, we join our students in saying that black lives do matter. Diversity and inclusion are not only fundamental to our university's mission, they are vital to our continued success. With the support of the Board, we have made some great strides in recent years to increase and promote inclusion and diversity at LSU. But we all know there's more work to be done, and by working together, we can make further strides. Diversity is more than numbers of students. It is about inclusion. The quilt is stronger and more beautiful when the individual fabrics are tightly woven together. To live and learn together as a community, we continue to strengthen that weave. Now, we continue that work together on multiple fronts. We have shared the details in an open letter to our community, and as always, our actions will speak louder than our words. It is significant and moving that I'm reporting on these actions today, Juneteenth, a day on which we celebrate the end of slavery, as the last enslaved blacks in Texas learned they had been freed, they were no longer enslaved, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation. While slavery has long been abolished, its cruel vestiges, the ensuing Jim Crow era, and ongoing racial discrimination plague our communities. Racism is a cancer that eats us from inside. We must get rid of it. While June nineteenth, Juneteenth is also called Celebration Day and Freedom Day, our country will not be able to fully celebrate until racism has been eradicated and Black Americans and people of all races can truly live together. can truly live together in equality and freedom. We all have a role to play in that effort. We will continue our conversations with our black student leaders, our Black Faculty and Staff Caucus, as well as others of underrepresented communities at LSU. We're planning a day-long inclusion, equity, and diversity leadership retreat in Baton Rouge on July 1st. And stay tuned. Again, our actions will speak louder than our words. So thank you for taking the time to discuss these important issues with us and our students, and I look forward to continuing them. As we move forward on Juneteenth, let us reflect on the pain of the past that continues today, but also on the important work still to be done and the healing. Thank you. Last week, we moved into phase two of our plan to bring personnel back to campus in Baton Rouge. And we continue, as you heard, to plan for a fall reopening. In the coming months, we expect, and weeks, we expect to implement further plans and to be back in the fall, as we have already described. I will say something that we've been able to do over the course of this summer of physical separation is we've been able to have fora. And we've had several fora in which 1,500 of our faculty and staff have participated. We don't do that when we're not distant physically. So in a way, the technology has brought us together. And I hope my colleagues, the chancellors and executive directors and of the leaders of the other campuses would agree, we've also been talking, I think, more than we ever did before we went virtual. And so we will continue those conversations as we move forward. One place I have been is the legislature multiple times. Dan has reported on the budget, and I will not repeat that. I will say that the legislature has approved nearly 264 million for construction and building projects for LSU across all eight campuses. That's 75 million in current year funding and 189 million in subsequent year funding. In the meantime, we continue to focus on the things we can control and be as financially prudent as possible. One of the things we can control is retention. And retention right now looks great. Our numbers in summer school are way up, helped in part by the CARES relief funding that students in the campus receive from Congress, and also helped in large part by a 15% reduction in tuition and fees for summer school on the Baton Rouge campus. We can also affect recruitment. And as I've told you before, and I continue to tell you today, in Baton Rouge at least, we are setting a record for recruitment. We had set a goal of receiving 7,300 deposits. We have already passed 8,100. For perspective on how that compares to other schools, other schools across the country are showing a drop on average of 10%. So we are bucking the national trend. Our deposits of out-of-state students are up by 35%. And we expect a quarter of our incoming class will be composed of students from outside Louisiana. We expect about 35% of the incoming class will be from historically underrepresented groups. We've seen a 22% increase in deposits from African-American students so far and a 25% increase from Hispanic students. Housing demand is also up. People want to be back on campus. Go Tigers, go everyone in LSU, pilots, et cetera. Our retention efforts were further aided, as I said, by the reduction in fees and the CARES money. I want to, I want to close this part of my report by saying, what a great job our enrollment folks have done on recruitment and on retention. We've talked a lot about what we've done during COVID. Well, that continues. LSU Health New Orleans pathologists recently performed the first series of autopsies on African-Americans who died from COVID-19 in New Orleans. And their findings are providing new and critical information to guide patient management. LSU Health Science Center in Shreveport continues to conduct clinical trials on convalescent plasma therapy and inhaled nitric oxide therapy. And some of the intellectual property and patents coming out of Shreveport are now being used on some of the proposed vaccines. In Baton Rouge, we've signed a licensing agreement with a Calgary-based technology company to work in partnership on potential COVID-19 treatments with our deep drug research team that's currently a semifinalist for the $5 million IBM Watson AI prize. Meanwhile, our researchers in Baton Rouge are working with Tulane researchers to study samples in wastewater systems in New Orleans and Baton Rouge to get a clearer picture of how many people have COVID in those cities and help map the virus's spread in the event we see a second wave of infections. Our Manship School of Communication at LSU and our Public Policy Research Lab recently released surveys about Louisianians' residents' feelings about the reopening of the state and the various risks of activities during the pandemic. And again, these are just a few of the highlights. Our faculty continue their fantastic work, teaching remotely during summer courses. And just a few highlights of LSU faculty. LSU geophysicist Patricia Purceau was recently named a fellow at the Radcliffe Institute for Advanced Study at Harvard University. LSU Boyd Professor of Piano and Jazz Studies Willis Deloney, who is one of the nation's leading classical and jazz crossover artists, was named LSU's honoree for the 2020 SEC Faculty Achievement Award. LSU Computer Science and Engineering Assistant Professor Ming Shiyan Sun recently received an NSF Career Award worth nearly $423,000 for a project that she's working on, which is supported by the NSF Information and Intelligence Systems Division. Mark Ewing already told you about Skyler Mays, who won the H. Boyd McWhorter Scholar-Athlete Award, Outstanding Scholar-Athlete in the SEC. Skyler will go on, he hopes, to the NBA and thereafter, medical school. He is as great a student as he is a basketball player. You also heard that Joe Burrow received the SEC Roy F. Kramer Male Athlete of the Year Award. He also was named the Allstate Sugar Bowl's James J. Corbett Award Male Winner, which is given to the top amateur athlete in Louisiana. And this year's Female Corbett Award winner was LSU track star Thania Marshall. Now, for a few highlights of other successes, the Pennington Biomedical Research Center recently secured an $11 million grant from the National Institutes of Health to establish a Center of Biomedical Research Excellence. The five-year grant will be used to establish a metabolic basis of disease center, which will allow young scientists to study the mechanisms of diabetes, pre-eclampsia, and anxiety-driven eating. We announced in late May that we are leading an innovative and exciting $20 million project that will introduce new technologies and materials to boost a range of manufacturing industries with federal support from the National Science Foundation. Through this project, LSU scientists and engineers will be discovering and testing materials that can be used in advanced 3D printing. The Louisiana Materials Design Alliance, or Lambda, is being led by LSU and will also include scientists and engineers at Louisiana Tech, University of Louisiana Lafayette, Southern University, and Tulane University. LSU Shreveport recently recognized as the fifth-ranked university among the top 50 business schools by study.com, which also named LSU as first in the nation on the top 50 MBA schools list for 2020. Congratulations. LSU A was awarded a $432,000 grant by the Board of Regents of the State in late May as part of the departmental enhancement program. It'll be used to enhance its biology curriculum through undergraduate research. And one of the great accomplishments is that joint research project that I described earlier that will help facilitate our reopening across the state in the fall. As always, we celebrate our past success, but we remain focused on the future and the fall semester. And I think and hope we are going to have a lot more to celebrate in the months ahead. I'd like to close by saying again just how proud I am of the entire LSU family and our leadership, students, faculty, and staff at each of our campuses. They all need to be commended for their continued fight against COVID-19, their dedication to educational excellence and our research mission, and their desire to foster a more inclusive, diverse, and welcoming community. I think it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that none of us could have envisioned all the challenges that have come during these past six months. But I also think you all know I'm an optimist. And in every challenge, I see an opportunity. And I remain extremely optimistic about the future of LSU. And I have every confidence that the greatest days of our great university are still ahead of us. Thank you all very, very much. Madam Chair.
Thank you, President Galligan. This month, we have three reports to accept. These reports include the second-quarter summary, a quarterly investment report, and a third-quarter information report. I will accept a motion to accept all of the reports enumerated in this section of the agenda today.
Oh, move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Armentor, second.
Second, Robert Damp.
Thank you, Mr. Damp. Is there any objection? Without objection, the reports are adopted. Today, we are going to do board approvals slightly differently. I will entertain a motion to have the full board approve each item as it was presented in the Academic Affairs Committee.
So moved.
Ms. Jones makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, second.
Yes, thank you. Second by Mr. Williams. Is there any objection? Without objection, the resolutions are adopted. I will now entertain a motion to approve each item as it was presented in the Finance Committee. Mr. Blossman makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Damp. Any objection? Without objection, the resolutions are adopted. I will entertain a motion to approve each item as it was presented in the Property and Facilities Committee. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Woods makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Jones. Any objection? Without objection, the resolutions are adopted. Finally, I will entertain a motion to approve each item as it was presented in the Athletics Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Jones. Is there a second?
Second by Armentor.
Thank you, Mr. Armentor. Second by Mr. Armentor. Is there any objection? Without objection, the resolutions are adopted. I will now entertain a motion to approve each item as it was presented in the Audit Committee. Is there a motion?
Oh, move.
Moved by Mr. Armentor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Starnes. Is there any objection to the motion? Without objection, the resolution is adopted. With that, the items put before the Board of Supervisors today are approved. Now time for the Chair's report. I'll keep it brief. The President and the Chancellors had a great deal to report on. But I would like to say that this has been a month and several months of deep conversations and work, work on items we discussed today, work on reopening plans to bring faculty, staff, and most importantly, our students back to all LSU campuses, to reopen research at Pennington and the Ag Center, research that helps us determine causes and effects of diseases and conditions we have known to be detrimental to the health of Louisianians but seem to be somehow associated with the scourge of COVID-19. Once again, as is the tradition across the world, I want to commend our chancellors, our medical staff, and our researchers who are leading the fight, leading through LSU in our hospitals, clinics, testing sites, mobile testing sites, and research labs in the fight against COVID-19. Louisiana's made great progress. We all want more progress made so that all Tigers, Bengals, Generals, and Pilots can join together in our beloved tradition on our campuses and in our sports arenas this fall. We will continue in our work. And the Chair has asked that diversity training will be established across all departments, all departments and offices of LSU and all LSU campuses. This has already been addressed in the Roadmap to Diversity. And we will continue that work and it will reach every level, including the Board of Supervisors. In August, we will announce and establish a new standing committee pending board approval for the Committee on Social Equity, Justice, and Inclusion. Let us continue the work we've begun. We must continue the hard conversations. I implore our students to come together, be it electronically or in person when we are finally allowed to join together, to hear one another, to reach out to the faculty, to not be afraid to reach up to the board and the administration. We are here because, as my friend, the Commissioner of Higher Education, Dr. Kim Hunter-Reed, tells me every week, this is all about the students. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 14, 2020, in Baton Rouge. I pray we are all in Baton Rouge in person. I want to thank all the board members who were able to participate today and send my prayers and good wishes to those who have had deaths of close family members and are in health that could not allow them to join us today. We continue to think of all of you and pray for all of you. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Is there a second?
Second, Wayne Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there any objection? Without objection, this meeting of the LSU Board of Supervisors is adjourned.